Good evening. This is the December 21st, 2017 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're in Town Council chambers. It is 7:11 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The commission please introduce yourself, starting on my right.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Jonathan Formicelli, alternate.
Bruno Mayini, alternate.
Ian Ambrosi, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman.
Paul Leacy, commissioner.
Michael Riley, secretary.
Scott Schatz, sign language group director and town engineer.
Rebecca Wood, reporting secretary.
And town planner will address his excuse this evening. Item number three, organizational items. According to our bylaws, we have to have election of officers. First meeting after the first Thursday in December, which is today. So we will be electing chairman, vice chairman, and a secretary. We have to have at least four full commissioners and one alternate in order to hold the election. So we have our four full commissioners. I'm going to see Jonathan as the alternate for this meeting because he has to deliberate later on some of the other items. So Jonathan, you're seated for the meeting. So first up is the chairman. Do we have any nominations for the chairman?
I nominate William Porter as chairman of the planning zoning commission.
My second.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I nominate William Porter to be chairman of the planning zoning commission.
We have a nomination. We have a second. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of William Porter for the chairman? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And just one confirmation, the second was who?
Paul.
Paul.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Bill.
Next up, vice chairman. Do we have any nominations for vice chairman?
I nominate Michael Riley for the position of vice chairman.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Michael Riley?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to secretary. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Paul Leacy as secretary of the planning zoning commission.
Second.
We have a nomination, we have a second. Any other nominations for secretary? All in favor of Paul Leacy?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the second was Leon?
Yes.
Second.
All right, item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on a matter not related to a public hearing? Seeing none. Item number five, general appointments, we have none. Public hearings, we had two that were continued. SCP-2017-11, file number 1594A, 124 Enterprise Drive. At the request of the applicant, that hearing has been postponed to January 5th, 2018. SCP-2017-10, file number 1593A, 887 Main Street. That application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Next up, site plan review. Item number eight, site development plan, we have nothing. Deliberations and determinations. Item number nine, SCP-2017-06, file number 1589A, 285 Cutler's Farm Road, Wolf Park Wall Fields and overflow parking, request for a 90-day extension. I have a letter here, Dear Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the commission's special exception permit resolution of approval dated July 6th, 2017, an extension of 90 days is hereby requested to provide additional time needed to complete the conditions set forth therein regarding submission of revised final plans. The plans are nearly complete, but additional time is needed as we approach the upcoming January 2nd, 2018 deadline. Thank you for your affirmative consideration of this request. Sincerely, Francis Cooper, Director. So, we have a request for a 90-day extension on special exception permit. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to grant the extension on SCP-2017-06, file number 1589A.
Second.
Leon, second. Any discussion? Scott, anything that you want to tell us about?
No, just we're working on it and we're waiting for a little bit of information from the park and rec department.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? All right. We have a motion, we have a second. I'll call the roll, starting with Jonathan.
Formicelli, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes?
A.C.S.
Riley, yes.
Okay. Item number 10, bond releases or reductions. Yeah, SCP-06-4, file 1232C, 217 Cutler's Farm Road. We have a letter from Douglas J. Nolan, JNN Enterprises, Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. This letter is a request for the release of the $5,000 bond for the 217 Cutler's Farm Road subdivision. Application 06-4, file 1232C, Lorin Estates. All improvements have been completed per Conrad. Thank you, Douglas Nolan. We have a bond release report from the town engineering department. Everything has been completed. They had an original bond of $335,000 that was reduced to a $5,000 bond, and as noted in the bond release report, all of the work has been completed. So, we have a motion.
Move to grant the bond release of 06-4, file number 1232C, 217 Cutler's Farm Road.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or comments or discussion? I'm just curious, Scott, why is this going so long?
It just was there and there was a, just a restoration of a small wetland area that was off one of the lots and it just sat there for years. He didn't ask for it back.
I mean, is 06, 2006? Because I thought that road was older than that.
No, when I came here in 2006, they were like in the middle of building.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the roll, starting with Jonathan.
Formicelli, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes?
Leacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
Okay. Item number 11, modifications, we have no, nothing. Item number 12, meeting minutes, December 7th. Have they drafted our packet?
On that last one, I just, the second was Leon?
Yes.
Now, can we start out with a motion?
Move to accept the draft, December 7th, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Anything, Leon?
No.
No? We'll call the roll. Formicelli, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes?
Leacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
Item number 13, application deliberations determinations. First up is SDP-2017-02-A1, file number 122, 35 Corporate Drive. This was a, an application for a construction modification. They are adding four small AC condenser units outside the building and five large pad-mounted units on the western, the backside of the building. Installing a new electrical transformer near the front entrance and a diesel-powered generator on a pad-mounted generator adjacent to the transformer, which will now be in a landscaped island area. Relocating the handicap parking, modifying the sidewalk at the front building entrance for handicap accessibility. Relocating some parking spaces behind the building, installing hand, safety handrails by the rear doors, little bit of a shift in the location of the previously approved dumpster They're going to be putting a off-premises private street sign down near the intersection of Corporate Drive and Main Street. For discussion, that is going to be a ground sign and it's going to meet all the conditions of our zoning regulations. And there was a notation that the additional added parking towards the rear of the building will be 100% paved. So that's, that's the bulk of the modification. So, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the site development plan, SDP-2017-02-A1, as drafted.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Are they going to, did they have any time to do the paving? Will you put an extension in after that?
We gave them an extension.
I don't see that.
The number seven, June 1st, 2018.
Is that on there?
Well, yeah, they did the road already and then we... Yeah, the item number seven, the last thing, the added landscaping may also be delayed. The paving was delayed and the landscaping has been delayed with a 100% completion date of June 1st, 2018.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Call the roll.
Formicelli, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes?
Leacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
All right, next up, SDP-2017-06, file number 126, 814 Main Street. This is the former residence that's being converted into a professional office. The plans call for widening the existing driveway and creating five off-street parking spaces, one of which will be handicap, sidewalk along the street. Didn't see it in here, Scott, but we're, the pole does have to be relocated.
Yeah, it's in there. I checked it.
Our town regulations require four feet clear on the sidewalk. They're going to be installing a wooden handicap ramp at the front of the building, and we gave them some latitude in the configuration of that. There will be a freestanding sign, shallow rain garden towards the rear of the site. The existing shed is being removed. There's no requirement for a dumpster enclosure. They're going to maintain the existing well and septic system. The proposed bollards are going to be, along the parking areas are going to be replaced with landscaping. And that's pretty much the highlights of that one. They were also given a completion date. Scott, do you remember what their completion date was?
It was June 1st.
Should be on the, usually it's, it's a, December 21st, 2022. The five, is that what you're asking?
No. I thought they had the same one, same June 1st date for their landscaping.
Maybe we didn't...
Number eight, June 1st. With letter B.
That's right, and he has to come back was by May 1st if he needs an extension.
Letter B, number eight.
Thank you. All right.
So, he's allowed to work there.
Are they changing the ramp or it was just, how is he allowed to work there? But he has to allow his work.
It has to be ADA compliant and we gave them the opportunity, if he wants to return it.
I thought we were recommending.
We were recommending, we're not requiring. Because if, if the existing configuration meets ADA compliance, we told him he could do that, but we...
It's proposed, it's still proposed.
It's proposed to come straight out.
Right.
And if that meets, we left it up to him. We were not requiring it to return. We were recommending it, but we're not requiring it.
Can that change?
The ramp. I thought we were requiring it to be going.
You thought you were looking at approval with modification as opposed to recommendation? Well, I'd see what the other commissioners think, but I don't remember it being anything final.
What are we talking about?
The wooden ramp.
I was thinking it was a ramp.
Yeah, Bruno, you were not here. Jonathan, you were here.
I was here for the, for the lawyer, though?
Yeah, but he came back.
He came in again. And some of the members of the commission wanted him to make a U shape instead of the straight. And I thought it was to give him the option either way.
That's, that was my understanding.
I think that's what we wanted, probably.
And he said, during the hearing, if...
And he said he wanted to do it that way.
He said that he didn't have a problem with that as long as it could be physically done, as long as it fit. I remember him saying that he didn't care which way it went.
Yeah, we...
Yeah, I think he, I think he was sort of drifting toward Paul's way if he could do it, but he wasn't sure if it was...
Well, he wasn't sure because he didn't know if the slope would work in that area.
That's what we had to know.
And he said he'd be happy to do it if it, if it would work, you know?
It was a, it was a recommendation, it was not a requirement during the public hearing.
I thought we required it if it worked, but that's not, that's not the way it's...
Yeah, that, that's not my understanding.
Can that still be modified at this point?
Well, I don't, yeah, it could be if, if we wanted to make it a requirement. I, I'm not inclined to make it a requirement. You know, we made a recommendation, but I'm only one, one voice out of five, okay? So what do we want to do with the ramp?
So, do you comment that Will wrote, right? Did you read it?
No.
Because it says, it's more going along the lines of what Paul's saying. It's saying, "Wooden handicap ramp access shall be painted and stay in matchable color. The configuration and orientation of handicap accessible ramps shall be revised to primarily extend across the front of the existing building rather than extending straight outward from the front door stoop. The site plan and related site details shall be revised accordingly subject to the town plan approval."
Oh, shall be revised.
Yeah, he did write it the way Paul was saying.
So it is a requirement.
Again, we've given some kind of approval, they've given the release. I got that, I got it.
Yeah, number eight.
Yeah, I got it, we're good. I'm good.
You good now?
Yeah.
All right. You're good?
Yep. So it's a, it's a requirement that he use the U shape thing?
Yeah.
If it works, of course.
If it works. Otherwise, staff can modify the design. All right. Well, we had our discussion before a motion, but do we have a motion?
I move to approve the site development plan, 2017-06, 814 Main Street, as drafted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll?
Formicelli, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Leacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
Regulation Review Amendment Work Session, we are not going to be doing anything until after the holidays on that. Correspondence, I have not received any. Scott, do you have any correspondence?
She didn't give me anything.
Okay. Chairman's report. I was informed on Tuesday, I think it was, that the person that was initially going to be appointed to the commission to fill Dave Townsend's seat has been commissioned for something else. So he will not be joining us on planning and zoning. And the RTC informed me that Bruno is going to be filling the vacant chairman's seat, and we're still looking for an alternate. So I don't know if you have any...
We have an alternate selected.
I'm only the chairman.
Or fellow senator.
It was voted on, at a meeting on Tuesday, Ryan Condon, Dennis Condon's son, will be moving from ZBA appeals to second alternate.
I'll just call Terry about that. So Bruno, I don't know if they've given you any indication as to when you're supposed to be appointed.
Nothing.
That's going to happen at a town council meeting in the near future.
I think they're waiting for a council vote or something.
Yeah, it has to go, you know, to town council, and I don't know when their next meeting is.
I haven't met with Ellen yet.
It's normally before.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah, like usually at 6:30 or 7:00, Ellen meets and then they do it at the, at town Does anyone else have anything to report? Well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Definitely world record over here. I came in 10, 10 minutes late and we're, well, we're about out of here at 20.
Yeah, right. It's all your fault, Leon.
Still a world record.
Worst case, we got the hand held. That picks up everything better anyway.
All right, we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Good evening, this is the January 2nd, 2018 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Jim Went, I'm the chairman of the board, and starting, I write, I'll let the other members introduce themselves for the record.
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Ben Mayini, member.
Tim Ramsey, alternate.
Marian Calo.
Andrew Marone, alternate.
Okay, I will have the secretary read the notice of public hearing, please.
Zoning Board of Appeals, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held December 5th, 2017. It was postponed to this evening, January 2nd, 2018. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the town hall, council chamber, 7th Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, at 7:30 PM, and soon thereafter concerning the following. ZBA-2017-07, file number 1395, 94 Elm Street, assesses map 16, lot 27. Application of Mike Kecklick, is that what it is?
Kecklick.
Kecklick, okay. For the following area variances, Section 1.9.6A and Section 3.1.5A, to permit a street frontage of 146.3 feet in lieu of 150 feet, and 1.9.6B, to permit a lot width to rear of square of 141 feet in lieu of 150 feet. Baghdad Family Limited Partnership Property Owner. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matter is on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. Published twice in the Monroe Coria.
Thank you. Before we started, I'm just noting that our last meeting, Andrew, you sat, we need two alternates to sit this evening, so Mr. Ramsey and Mr. Condon will be sitting this evening. So, with that, we'll open up file 1193, 94 Elm Street. Whoever's going to present this, come on up. Introduce yourself for the record and we'll go from there.
My name is Peter Olson, I am the builder.
My name is Mike Kecklick, trying to buy the property.
I was hired by Mike Kecklick to try to get a building permit out, and I got the septic system all designed and approved, and when I came into the zoning, to get the zoning permit, we realized that it needed two variances. While looking into it, I guess the lot was subdivided in 1969, and it was an approved lot, and it had 150 feet of road frontage. And in the early 80s, the DOT straightened out the road and took part of the property, making the, the frontage from 150 to 146.13. And then also, in, I believe, 2013, the town added to their regulations that you needed the same width from the, I guess, to the rarest square, which the lot was a little bit tapered, so it never had 150 feet in the back, so we're asking for a variance for that also. And that's my story.
So you're saying the lot complied with the street frontage at the time?
At the time.
But when the state straightened up, because it had the lengthier frontage because of the curve?
Curve.
They made it straight, it lessened it to, reduced it to less than 150.
Yep. And the lot never had the width to the rare square, 130 feet back, it was always 141.13 feet, or point 13.
But that's a requirement that came on the books subsequent to the approval of the septic.
Yep.
When the state took that property, it made your frontage non-conforming. Did the state have to come to us, or shouldn't they have come to us to, for approval of making it non-conforming?
They should have unless at the time it was still conforming, it was...
No, they took the frontage and made it from 150.
They only come if there's a area variance for a lot area. There's other variances, they ignore them.
I can't hear you say it loud.
They only typically come if one of the variances would be for the lot area.
Oh, the frontage is a matter of...
Then, if the lot, if the lot area and there are other ones identified, they may do that as a courtesy to the town, but their position is that they don't do anything other than lot area.
So those properties 2, 3, 4, what's the frontage on those? Do we know, do we have that?
146.3.
No, the adjacent lots.
Oh, the adjacent lots, they should be 150 as well, or more.
Purchasing.
Yeah, like 150, 150, 150. This one's curved, I can't read this one. Probably longer.
The other, the other difference is these four lots are all developed, right?
Yeah, and there, we're, we're planning on putting the similar size house, the same, we got it conformed to the same setbacks, so it'll look, you know, exactly like all the other houses. We're not, by granting us this variance, we're not changing the characteristic of all the other houses. It'll fit right into the same neighborhood.
So basically what you're saying is your nonconformity has been caused by the state and by the town changing the regulations after the fact.
Correct.
There's a house, house, house.
Anybody else have any questions?
When was the street, uh, wired?
In, I don't know the exact, they said the early eighties, and then they have a, a, a recorded map, uh, July sixteenth, nineteen eighty-two. But I think the work was done, they said, early eighties.
And then just when was the property purchased?
Well, we're trying to purchase it now, that's.
Gotcha.
You know, we didn't realize that they, they, that the Baghdadi's were representing it as an approved building lot, we didn't realize it was not an approved building lot till we came into town.
Will you want to just say probably with any of the other lots?
All the other lots are already built on.
Oh, they're already built on, okay.
Yeah, you can see them here, Marion, these are houses.
Okay, yeah, all right, I see it.
And they were all, I mean, it was subdivided in the early, uh, sixty-nine, and all the houses, the other four lots were all built in the early seventies. Right after it was subdivided.
This lot was retained as part of the, the home set, which was this lot. Um, and there are, as I said, accession, in my memo, accessory structures that are here that were related to this house. There's two, I think there are both manmade ponds here and here. This was recently taken over by the bank?
That's what I was told, yes.
Yeah. So prior to that, we could have adjusted this lot, they were in the same ownership, we could have adjusted it, it just didn't, timing wise, it just didn't seem to work.
Right.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, do you wish to be heard on this matter?
Oh, me?
Yep.
I'm just hearing it for the show.
Okay. Well.
Do you, do you, just a, do you vote on it tonight or do you?
We will. So seeing nobody else interested in, uh, participating in the public hearing, we'll close the file and close the public hearing.
Andrew, come on.
Sure. All right, so, um, we are going to bypass the annual meeting since we don't have all the regular members, so we'll just open up discussion on this particular matter. And we have a, a motion on this Elm Street matter we just heard?
I'd make a motion to approve, I mean, the, the lot is existing, as we said, and the nonconformities were not self-created, they were created by the town and the state, so no reason to hold the man up.
You second that motion?
I would second that, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or issues before we vote? I agree with what you said, I would, I would support that motion, but does anybody else have anything before we call the vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
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 Opposed? None, it's approved unanimously. Yeah, sorry, we had to make a wait an extra month, but, uh, not that we've been doing much digging in the last few weeks anyway. Okay, that's true. Folks have a chance to review the, the minutes of the November meeting?
Fine, I, I looked at it.
I have it at home, I didn't, I don't have it.
A motion to approve.
I don't have your, I have a copy, I might, but just take over. Okay, we'll take a couple, just take them, take them out. Thanks, okay. Anybody want to make a motion on the minutes from last month?
A motion to approve.
Is the motion approved, is your second?
Second.
Second?
Oh wait, that was in there, I probably shouldn't. Second.
Oh, yeah, that's probably, yeah, so, uh, I will have, yeah, Mr., we'll have, uh, Andrew sit for, for you, for, for the minutes. All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, they are approved unanimously. Minor details, maybe?
Yeah.
Is there anything else we need to be dealing with this evening?
Oh.
What's the scoop with, um, did Bill's Drive-In get approved for their, their?
Bill's approved a long time ago.
Yeah, are they, are they going to do it anymore?
And last I heard, um, who was? I forget who it was now. I think it was maybe Carmine Anthony's, I don't know, maybe it's wrong.
Yeah, he has new ownership.
Was gonna buy it.
Really? Yeah.
But buy more pills? That was like a month or so ago?
No, they did, if you go there, it's, it's new guys and they say, yeah, we bought it, it's three people and.
Oh, they did?
They're like transitioning, the two, uh, the two guys that have been there are still there, but, yeah, they purchased it, they said they're going to keep it the same.
Yeah, they're supposed to come in and get a permit they haven't.
What building are you talking about?
Bill's Drive-In, I don't want to let.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if they know, you might want to let them know, yeah, the two Greek guys, yeah.
And there's a couple years left on that approval.
Okay.
And they can get an extension again.
Had to go in and let them know, the new guys might not know.
I thought it was a little different, I didn't see it, I maybe, I figured maybe it was just the time of day when I was in there, that neither of those two guys were there, but, uh, I didn't, I didn't notice it, it was a new owner.
Yeah, new guys, very nice, they were, yeah, they're still like, I guess, learning the ropes, was when I was home.
Well, not that they know about the permit, but they know about the approval, because they've been dealing with their lawyers, so.
Oh, okay, fun.
Interesting. Well, I hope they don't change it, kind of like college.
Yeah, they said, they said they grew up here and they weren't going to, that's what they told us when we asked.
Okay. Interesting.
It would be nice if they did it.
Yeah, the site needs support, yes, it would be nice to implement the plan that got approved, because the site, the site, the site needs the upgrades. I was excited to see the upgrades they were proposing.
It expires in a, a few days, can they, uh?
No, a couple of years.
Huh? A couple of years.
The man getting it in five years. Actually, I think they asked for the five years already, they asked for it earlier, and now they have some later.
They've never supported that.
Marion, can I get the?
Yeah, I agree, it's, it's a massive septic system, the shade is a problem.
And so have that little children, I should, no, this is, yeah, I don't need that.
For small breweries, for those of us out there. Any, any action on the old Goodwill site?
Nobody's even asking.
Yeah.
I think they're asking, not a big part, you know. Well, the building is kind of, I don't know how usable the building is, if they have to tear it down. Kind of just an old box. Old fashioned box.
Uh, look at Walter Stewart's, right, that market?
Barry's General Store.
So we never heard back from, uh, the dentist, you know, the old dentist place?
Oh, yeah.
It's up for sale.
I know, it's been.
Yeah, they withdrew their, they withdrew that appeal?
They resolved their issues.
The dentist across from Goodwill.
Green.
Oh, that, no, we worked, we worked that out.
Okay.
Oh, they worked it out?
Well, we worked it out, but that doesn't give them a.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so they're satisfied. And something, oh, something else has happened, where is it?
The other is. That might have been for you. Had we approved.
Now, since, uh, Walmart was out, Kimmel's property, and he was going to put all those extra stores up there, is every, all that stuff is on hold, or?
My understanding is that, um, John is in the process of relinquishing back the property to the, the property on the front, on the street, the old Fiche and Vitamont plant? Back to, to Fiche. So everything's kind of like.
But he put a lot of groundwork into that property.
It had been done many years before. Walmart, um, they mined everything out of it, I guess, and left it kind of barren for years. We did talk to someone about that site, but it's someone who's looking at two or three other towns as well, so, who knows? Oh, what I wanted to tell you is the, uh, the, the hotel project.
Yeah.
That was under appeal, both your decision and the P and Z's, we, we won both. It was consolidated, so we won. And the, the, uh, decision is pretty good.
Hotel?
Remember the whole, the Standard Hotel? Down on, um.
Across from Duchess, right?
Yeah, a little further down, yeah, not too far from Duchess.
By the water.
By the, 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 um.
The undeveloped.
Playground, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Country pizza. So it got approved, that's awesome.
Well, he got it.
Or no?
Well, Gannon was suing.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, we prevailed.
We beat Gannon, cool.
Well, Gannon owns the Vossi property.
He owns the property in front.
The Vossi, where Vossi's is.
Yeah, he owns that too.
Yeah.
He owns a few of the properties there.
Between Gannon and Sippinley, almost, it sounds like.
Bit of it.
So, he can peel it, he's got fifteen or twenty days, twenty days to peel that.
Those are the cost of it.
Yeah, but the decision was pretty good, so I think he'd have a hard time prevailing the decision.
Who wrote it? Was it Judge Radcliffe?
Um, yeah, it might have been.
It's very thoughtful.
Yeah, good. He likes zoning stuff.
He does.
Do we have, do we have anything for, uh, next month?
We're pretty quiet actually, P and Z's quiet too.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Pretty cool.
Thank you all for coming out.
Sounds good.
Stay warm.